First thing on the agenda tonight, we've got Brian and Cassandra.
Brian should be here any minute.
I don't know where Brian is, yeah.
He's got all of, he's got maps and packets and all that.
Why don't we go to the next item when everybody shows up, we'll go back to them.
Okay, we'll move on until they're ready.
Approval of minutes on the December 20th, legislature board meeting. Some of it.
I was backing it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of vouchers.
All right, dinner fund, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Water fund, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty-eight cents. Sewer fund, twenty-six thousand, forty dollars and thirty-eight cents. And a capital fund, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. You want to speak on some of them bigger ones?
All right, just to say on the water fund, one hundred and eight thousand of that one hundred and thirty-seven thousand is basically bond payments for the Five Streets water and property taxes for the watershed down in Collins. And on the capital fund, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighty, twenty-four cents is the final payoff for North Country Contractors on the wastewater treatment Phase Two project. Fifty thousand, ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents is the final payoff on SC Spencer, the electrical part of the Phase Two project. So they're paid off with the contractors. And that's why those two are a little high this month.
So they've all been audited and I move that we pay them.
I make the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business, Phase Two wastewater treatment plant upgrades. We have a municipal solutions contract amendment. Basically what that's for is to take this project, close it out, the long-term bonding with the EFC. It's just additional, I believe, it'll cost us additional five thousand to close everything out. So we just need a motion to approve the.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business, Phase Two wastewater treatment plant upgrades. We have a municipal solutions contract amendment. Basically what that's for is to take this project, close it out, the long-term bonding with the EFC. Just additional, I believe, it'll cost us additional five thousand to close everything out. So we just need a motion to approve the.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Phase Two wastewater, basically, I got an email from Kevin and Matt. Basically I called Matt this morning and said to the weather there was no reason to come up here. And basically they're saying they finished collecting all the close-up documents from all the contractors. We have the final payouts, which we just took care of on the vouchers for NCC and SC Spencer to end out that project. That's all they had. And then jumping down to the groundwater wells about, they're working on the close-up documents with Manford and Scott with SC Spencer to get those documents so we can close out those projects. And generator people are supposed to be up and fire up and test the new generator that's up at the water project, at the new groundwater with the wells on it. That's their update on the groundwater. Street lighting, LED conversion, we're still back and forth with New York Power Authority. The latest word I had this week, they're hoping to have their final, we're being held up to get our last two lights installed because of other municipalities that haven't had their agreements with National Grid approved, but they're hoping to have that done here by the end of the month. So now they're telling them to be up here to do our last two lights in the second or third week of February. Because we've had all our approvals from National Grid since last April, who were just held up with the New York Power Authority.
Mayor, why does that affect us? Somebody else is not having dinners ready, how does that affect them?
They don't want to send their contractors up here for just two, they want to come up and spend a couple of days here fixing everything.
The board wants to store everything for them?
Zoning changes, anybody have anything on that?
I met McCarthy and we did review the handicap ramp exemption, but he had nothing on the driveway yet, so it's going to take a little more time.
Are you and Ryan ready?
Okay, so.
We are, we'll back up.
I do.
Thank you.
Lot of traffic coming down through.
Yes.
Got behind the omission to get past them, yeah. Last couple of meetings I've noticed, well first off, let me say I've been sworn in now, so now I'm representative for Laugville to the Board of Legislators. Last couple of meetings it's been brought up, actually even more, that there's been a problem with communication with the county. And that's one thing that I would like to try and rectify. So a couple of things that came up for the TAP award, or TAP letter they wanted and other things. So I got Ryan and Cassie to come here and try and explain what's going on a little bit, answer your questions as we go. Let's get some dialogue going, some communication, so we don't feel that there's, you know, we're fighting each other, that it's not going the way we want, so. If Ryan, you want to take over, please?
Sure. Thank you for having us, we appreciate the time. I've got some information for each of you here.
Yep.
Mr. Sanders? Mr. Trump? All right, so, yeah, thanks for taking the time to have us here for a few moments. I want to first provide an update on the Rails to Trails project in general. So just so everybody's on the same page, like Mr. North said, we have a signed purchase agreement with GBT, okay? That purchase agreement is contingent upon approval from the federal government. So anytime a railroad changes hands, or in this case goes to official abandonment, the federal government has to give the green light for that, right? Because a railroad might have regional importance beyond just, you know, the individual community, right? So they're checking into things like, does it have implications for national defense? Does it have implications for interstate commerce, those types of things? That is before the federal government right now on what's called the Surface Transportation Board. It's a section of the Department of Transportation that's reviewing that, okay? So we anticipate, we've been in communication with the Surface Transportation Board, we've been in communication with GBT, who is the current owner, who has put forward the application to the Surface Transportation Board. We anticipate that we'll have the green light from the Surface Transportation Board, you know, anytime now. So they've been working through some questions, they sent the list of questions back to GBT, GBT's been answering those questions, so we're confident that that will move forward. The second thing that we've been doing is, we engaged with a planning firm, right? So this is a large project, it's not necessarily something that our county staff are used to working with on a day-to-day basis. We have engaged with a planning group called Alta. They are really one of the premier groups for planning and designing Rails to Trails projects. They have done dozens and dozens of rail trail projects across the United States. And we have hired them to here in Lewis County to help us. And basically we've hired them to do five things. They're going to help us with marketing and branding, they're going to help us with putting together an economic and health impact report, they're going to help us with stakeholder outreach and community engagement, which in our opinion is the most important thing. Preliminary engineering, so they're going to help us, you know, basically get the first stages of engineering done for the rail trail project. And then they're going to help us with grant funding, you know, getting those, the funding lineup. There is all types of grant funding available right now for Rails to Trails projects, federal, state. It's something that's definitely being pushed, there's a lot of money coming down from Washington and Albany for those types of things. The second thing that I want to point out is that, you know, we believe we are working quite well with the village's own efforts on this front. So Cassie and I, you know, have been working closely with the village's own comprehensive plan, which was adopted just in 2022, October of 2022. In your packet you'll see we went through and picked out the elements that, of the comprehensive plan that align with the Rails to Trails project. And I would point out specifically that page thirteen, the village's own master plan says that they plan to convert old rail lines into walkable and bikeable trails. I would also add that goal six point one point three of the village's own master plan says, in partnership with other organizations, they are to pursue financing options, including, but not limited to, the transportation assistance program, the TAP program, which is the grant that we are, as a county, pursuing. So I would point that out. Also, Lewis County, our own master plan, that was made in 2009, we have to update that probably next year. But our own county master plan also notes that in 2009, comprehensive plan, Lewis County's proposing to convert these rail beds into multimodal trails, which would connect the existing county trail system. So that's been something that has been on both the town, excuse me, village and county's radar for quite some time. I would also like to add that included in your packet is, I didn't include all the DRI applications, but you can see going back to 2019, the first year that we worked together, the village and the county, to put together the DRI applications, we have had this project in there from day one as a non-motorized trail. It says right in there, non-motorized, it has from day one of our cooperation on this project. So we have Cassie here, she's really the expert in the TAP application specifically. She's got some materials for you, and we've got some boards here so that we, you know, folks can follow. We just want to bring you through the process here, and I think it's important to note that, you know, we actually did meet with the village on this issue. On twelve six, we reached out to the mayor and village DPW, and on twelve twelve, we met with village officials, and that meeting was great, you know, Joe and Paul were there, and we made some tweaks based on input and feedback from the village. So, you know, I do think that we've made an effort to be transparent and work collaboratively. And I feel that we're trying to work towards goals that both the village and the county have expressly adopted in writing as a vision for the community. So I'll let Cassie walk you through the specifics of the TAP application.
So, well, I think all of you know me, I'm Cassandra Bion, the Director of Planning and Community Development, and my job, my mission of our department is to carry out the comprehensive plan and to carry out all of your comprehensive plans. So being that all of both of our comprehensive plans aligned with the development of this rail trail, rail to trail, you know, it's been included in lots of comprehensive plans, planning efforts, and grant applications in the past, this easel part is not big enough for my mind. Is why we opted to move forward this. TAP funding is not available every year, it's really important that you take advantage of these large sums of funds when they come down the lines. TAP funding is federal funds that are managed by the state. So we wanted to hop on this opportunity because you could apply for five million dollars, and then twenty percent of that would be a county match, whether it be in kind or their own chips funding to pursue, okay? So all of your packets should have this fact sheet included, they just walk you through the general facts of the application, it was a fun one. But I do want to point out that the Board of Legislators, being that this was a Lewis County application, they did not approve me to move forward with the application until twelve five, so December fifth. And the following day is when I reached out to the DPW and the mayor to schedule a meeting to go over some conceptual drawings, and that which, like Ryan alluded to, we had taken all of the concerns and the requests into account and worked them into the final application. So I just wanted to make sure that I could walk through some of the visual concepts that we included, and I think you all have a copy of those in your packets as well. So from the southern end, it'll start at River Street, and it'll take you across Mill Creek. So the bridge will actually be included, we'll be stabilizing that bridge and redeveloping it.
Go forward, Paul, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't know if it's, I just have too many words, but thank you very much. So a large cost of this rail trail development is because we do have to stabilize that bridge and redevelop that. And it goes over Water Street, and then it makes its way over to Shady Ave, where it comes through and behind, and then it crosses over to what I feel like a lot of, yeah, it was a majority of the same board members, the Trinity Ave, Forest Ave plan that we had done, where there was a lot of development along this corridor, where right now the Laugville co-op is at. But if there is a reason that they decide to move, that would be developable land, and the trail would come by right behind that area. And from Forest Ave, it, well, Forest Ave, right, we found that it's not technically called the road right there, here is the food pantry property that we would, that we actually have some, a developer interested through the DRI, has expressed interest in the large property there to develop, so the trail would certainly be beneficial opportunity for them. It crosses Trinity Ave and makes its way behind Progress Industries. And then along Nub Paper, which I think, is it Matif?
Matif.
Is the new name, so it would certainly add to the beautification efforts along this way. And I did want to point out, and I'm sorry for not pointing out earlier, but the Forest Ave corridor, one of the things that Paul had identified concerns about was the drainage, that of which we addressed when we worked into the application to work through. So that was an addition from our meeting. And then also lighting, the original plans did not come with lighting, but with working with the engineers, we had found a way to actually adapt the project even more so to avoid any electricity costs or additional environmental issues, and we worked in solar downcast lighting, so there would be little to no light pollution to the surrounding properties. So here it would cross the main Bostick Street, which is, that's kind of the pickle of a lot of this trail, that took the most engineering really, doesn't seem like a lot, but it is. So with the trees, these are all natural vegetation native to our area, and it comes up behind Laugville Masonry, but it's really Moose River.
Moose River, Rolf Peters or something.
Yeah, Moose River. And then it pops out at the trailhead that we are proposing to come off of Eight Twelve, which would be a dual access for the Laugville Ag Society to access the back portion of their property. So it's really a dual purpose and a win-win for everybody there. But we would develop a trailhead at that location so that people can park and walk into and out of the village. So that is the TAP application in a nutshell. Going back to the first sheet, another area that Paul had identified through your Five Streets project, I believe you had done a sidewalk between River Street and Jackson Street. And our original plan, as it's noted here, was to put it to, you know, basically do the sidewalk, but then Paul's like, oh, we actually did the sidewalk. So that was helpful for us, that we don't need to redo those efforts, and we were able to revise accordingly. So, so we, I mean, my job is certainly to work with you and to communicate with you, and I believe that we made all the changes that were requested from the village, so.
When we had our meeting, we had some questions for, some changes that we got to take care of, and with the new set, I think it has been taken care of.
But one thing Cassie, you might want to say that Paul and I know, I don't know about the rest of the board, that the county's trail system was going to be the ones doing all the maintenance and stuff.
Yeah, I did add that to the sheet, so that's on there for everybody too.
And we've said that consistently for five years.
So it needs maintaining in the winter time too?
Yep, yep, and there's standards set forth in the application that it has to be maintained, so it's year-round access. So that is something that a collaboration between Jackie and Highway would take care of.
And like Cassandra was talking, where the trail is going to start, being on the Fair Board, we've talked about it for years, trying to get an entrance off Eight Twelve to alleviate traffic very weak. And as a Director of the Fair Board, we're a hundred percent for this.
So there's one more thing that I'd like to cover before we can open it up to really any questions about anything going on with the county, we'd be happy to entertain them. But I did include something in your packet, which is just other investment that the county's made in the village of Laugville. I don't by any means mean for this to be comprehensive, but if you look at just the facade and street scape program, that is county dollars, that is three hundred and two thousand dollars that have flowed into the village of Laugville, forty-seven percent of the entire program funds have gone into the village. The vacant property revitalization program, again, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's a county-funded project, thirty-nine percent of total project funds have flowed into the village of Laugville. The broadband expansion program, we spent eighty-three thousand dollars in the village of Laugville. Light abatement, we cleaned up the house on Trinity Ave, that was a cost of thirty-nine thousand dollars for the village of Laugville. So that's a total of nearly seven hundred thousand dollars, not including the sales tax reimbursement that we pushed back, that was thirty-six thousand dollars, and the sludge tipping fee that we waived for the sewer bed project that you guys have been doing a great job with. So with that, I would again thank you guys for the opportunity to have us here. And any questions about anything going on in the county, we'd be happy to try to answer those if you have.
You mentioned Ryan, the sludge removal.
Yes.
First, you can say that you gave that back to us. Had you not, we would have to charge for it, and Craft pays sixty percent of our water and sewer bill. So by charging us for that, all you were doing was passing it on to industry. So I will make light of that. Further, I'm very happy that you're willing to do things in writing. You don't own some of the history, but in nineteen ninety-eight, you talked about tax that you had forgiven for the last three years. We had an agreement with the county, it was signed by Ralph Farney, or Pete Farney, excuse me, and myself, well actually his real name is Ralph, proved by both boards that the water filtration plant would never be taxed as long as it didn't change use. Fast forward about ten years, and this agreement became non-voyed, that the county had given to us in writing a good fate. We were taxed by the county, we got some of it back from you, but not anywhere near all of it. And we took you to court, or the county to court, we lost in court, we went to Supreme Court in Rochester, and we lost again. So, and, you know, it's great that you've come up with the figures, that six hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. I will again, as I've said for thirty years, share with you that that's money that we probably deserve and then some, because for thirty years, this county or four years, it's had sales tax revenue. The village of Laugville, and the rest of the municipalities in this county, have seen nothing of sales tax revenue, and this village is, rather we like, well, anybody wants to agree or not, is the economic driver for the county. There's actually, there's just no question about it. And all I'm saying is we should get our fair share. So that being said, I appreciate what you've given us tonight, but you can see the concerns that I have. So I'll use the floor now to whoever else wants to speak.
Well, I was nine years old in nineteen ninety-eight, and I was very concerned with the Yankees winning their third one.
Well, and Ryan, in fairness to you, yes, but you've also been the county manager for seven years, or what have you, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'd still like that three or four years, Dan could tell you of tax money that we haven't got back, that we can put back into the system, that we can give relief to our people, including Craft. And the other industries, but Craft is the main of water and sewer. They use about a, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, about a million gallons a day, thereabouts. If this village could provide that, Craft wouldn't be here. And I know that I'm a little off the subject, but we're talking about what the county has done for us, and I want to share what I think can be done more. And so that's what I've got to say.
Other questions? Scott?
I'd just like to thank you for coming tonight. It seems good to see communication start, and I'd like to see it continue.
And I'd like to see, I'd like to say I was glad you were able to make those changes.
In the future, we should bring everything to the full board in order for communication, because we did meet with the mayor and the DPW superintendent.
And that's another thing I view, I can be a bridge for this. We need to have that communication. I mean, things get tried on social media that just are way out of hand. If there's communications, honest, open, whatever, Dan's brought up some things that are important to him, the board has it, the county has it too. I'm that conduit right now, so please use me, I don't say use me. I am available, all right.
I do have two other questions, Ryan. Do, well, a question and a statement. Do you, where is the county in actually owning this land? Whereabouts, I know that's the Transportation Board. And I know that the President of the co-op sent a letter opposing the Rails to Trails that I saw on the, but what is your comment on those two issues? Have you addressed that issue with, I think it's Mr. Williams, and the concerns? I don't know if you've read them, he wrote a letter, I don't know if it was in support of the full co-op board, but he mentioned that he was the President of the co-op board in that letter.
I haven't seen anything from the co-op. We've received lots of correspondence, or any gains, from individuals, but in terms of the board taking action like the co-op, I am not aware of that. In terms of the county's ownership of the property, like I said, we have a purchase agreement with GBT that is contingent upon approval from the Surface Transportation Board. So that's where we're at in the process. As soon as we have that approval, then we'll move forward to closing.
And would you, would you say this is, this section that we want to do, that wants to be done, is separate from the Rails to Trails?
Well, it's the first leg, and it's, we've said kind of from day one, the asset that the county is acquiring is thirty-one miles, so each section is going to be different. It's not a uniform entity for each mile of this rail trail. We have really, you know, tried to be very consistent about that. For the village of Laugville, you know, a paved trail with lighting that is obviously non-motorized makes a lot of sense, and I think it can improve quality of life in the village. I mean, I live in the village, there's people walking constantly, it's a great place to get out and walk, and I think people would like this asset. But that doesn't mean that it's going to look exactly the same when you're right in the middle of, you know, pastureland and cartage. There's a lot in between there that is probably not going to be paved, probably not going to be lighted, you know, and it might have a different use. So, you know, we're not committing at this time to how each mile of trail is going to be treated, because it's going to take us, you know, years, honestly, and we've said that from day one. You know, this is a decade-long project of developing this asset one segment at a time. It does make sense to start here, as Dan said, it's the economic hub of the county, the most people live here, you know, and really honestly, it could clean up that part of the village. I mean, there's a lot of potential in that corridor right now for future economic growth. So, you know, that was our thought process for starting here.
If, so what you're saying is maybe outside the village, you're talking that there'd be motorized?
Potentially, in some sections.
And so if there's motorized, I don't know how you promote it also as a biking trail and a walking trail, because I just don't see how the two would mix on that narrow of a path. It would have to be one or the other. It would have to be one or the other.
It may have to be. That's, this is, you know, these are exactly the questions that the community is very anxious to answer, and I understand that, but it's going to take time. We need a lot more public input, we need a lot more engineering, right? So we are at the very first phase, and I really can't say enough that this is going to take years to develop, honestly. And so, you know, I can't tell you right now what each 100-foot section is going to be. I really couldn't. And by the way, the legislators need to make those decisions, and they're not even in a position at this point to be informed on exactly what we're going to do with each section.
Well, I think that three legislators may have lost because of that issue, because I think a lot of people are questioning that, and I think the motorization is something that a lot of people are against. So I think that that in itself was an issue.
If the Surface Transportation Board doesn't approve this, that kills the project? Is that publicly what's going to happen?
Yeah, well, we wouldn't be able to own the property.
Okay, just wondering, because if Dan was talking about a letter from President Co-op that he sent to the Transportation Board, we'll have to kind of wait and see with that?
Oh, yeah, I don't know if they sent something to the Surface Transportation Board. They haven't said anything directly to us, I can say that.
I saw it on their website, so. My next question is, to date, how much money do you feel you have spent on property that we don't own?
Very little. We've hired Alta only to do the parts of their work that aren't contingent upon owning the property. So we're moving forward with some of the marketing and branding, which is not lost, because we already have 14 miles of rail trail in Lewis County that we can promote. And we're working on the health and economic benefit analysis, because that is again, something that is not lost, that's part of their deal, that we can have them complete that work now and can be used in the future. And the third thing we're having them help with now is grant applications. So we have not fully engaged in the full contract with them. The meat of that contract with Alta is the community engagement that they're going to set up and run for us, as well as the preliminary engineering. And we're not engaged in any of that work with them until we're ready to move forward. So, you know, we've had some seekers done on the property, but we were able to do a lot of that in-house, with soil and water. So, I mean, we've spent some money, but, you know, it's a big project, it's going to take many years. And I would add that, you know, in the scope of county government, we spend less than 1% a year on recreation. In terms of the counties, you know, if you want to take just our $62 million budget, but if you add the hospitals $90 million budget, you're talking less than 1/4 of a percent on recreation. So the county's not breaking the bank on recreation. In fact, we lowered taxes last year 15% to the lowest level since 1996. So, you know, I think the amount and the scope of, you know, folks' understanding of county finances, we could do a better job, you know, helping people understand that, because really, we're not spending as much as folks seem to think on recreation, considering how much sales tax revenue and economic activity it drives.
When do you expect construction? I mean, here says if this tax grant's awarded, that would start 2026. What if the tax grant is not awarded?
Well, if it's awarded next year, then maybe 2027. But, you know, it depends. One of the reasons we wanted to get the grant in this year, and I will admit, it might be a little premature, we're putting this in before all the pieces aren't in place, but we know how these grants work. You guys know how these grants work, you've been doing it with water and sewer. You might not get it your first time, it might be your second or third time. So let's make our first time 2023, so that our second and third times are, you know, '24 and '25 were much more likely. That was our thought process, basically. But yeah, if we aren't awarded this year, then we get pushed back until, you know, we are awarded.
Yeah, the opportunities are never guaranteed every year, so we take advantage of them when they arise.
Sure.
Well, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Nobody has a question.
Do we, let's see, anybody in the public that might want to ask a question?
Do you want to answer anything?
That's your own meeting's decorum, it's up to you.
The lady had a question?
I'm just kind of wondering, and I know there's a lot of people, and I'm against the rest of the trails. The thing is, is that the village before wanted to do a walking trail, and people that live along there did not want to, because due to the fact is, they didn't want people to come on their property and whatever. That's a lot of people's main concern. And the thing is, is that also for the rail for trails, who's going to, hey, you said that the county's going to maintain it. Okay, we're talking law enforcement. How are you going to do that? Right now, as it is for law enforcement that I can see, it's not as great as it should be for the Sheriff's Department. So I'm just saying, security for the people that are walking on that trail. A lot of that happened in the past few years, especially around here in the county. We want the place to be safe. But the thing is, is that if we don't have enough law enforcement out there, something happens, don't you think that it would really be brought back to the county and say, you had all this, and you did help to prevent anybody to get hurt, or something drastically happens?
Well, I think public safety is always, as local government, needs to be top of mind, right? It's the most important thing that we do, probably. You know, in terms of statistics and research about these types of rails to trails and examples all across the United States, there is no indication, any research by any institution or community that has had these rails to trails, that they are any less safe than any other part of the village. They're equally as safe. Secondly, because they are well-lit and out of the way of traffic, in many ways, they're more safe. You know, we have, you know, quite honestly, there's more incidents of pedestrians colliding with vehicles and those types of public safety, you know, incidences than there are really of, you know, all the time, those types of things in Lewis County. We're already quite safe as a community, we want to stay that way, definitely.
But the one thing is, is that you always say, for the county government, you're always saying, everything's safe. You're not really out there, especially with the public. The public is out there more than, in my opinion, you all are. You can say a lot and everything else, but then when someone approaches you, they go say, did you ever check this and that? And then you say, no, never did. Something as big as a project like this, you really have to look at the safety for this community and every other community, because it would look very tragic if something happened. Things have, like I said, can't express it, a lot of things have changed a lot over the years, and it's not getting better, it's getting worse. You guys have got to get your head out of the sand. I'm just being realistic, and I know you all are just, you want, you want everything to happen, you want progress, but you've got to think what has happened, and what we've had, and what we're going to probably lose.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on, new business. Craft trip charges. Water for December 2023, there was none. Sewer for December 2023, none.
Mayor, I'm sorry, one more thing. I've made some extra here, I can leave for you guys. Sorry. Just got to sort out.
If you want a full set of those plans, Cassie can drop them off in my office. I'll be more than happy to take them.
Okay, I see sidewalk snow removal on here, somebody want to discuss that?
Yeah, I asked for it to be on the agenda, Mayor. I observed some people earlier this week walking lofty, or no, excuse me, shady avenue. And we've got snowbanks that have plowed into the sidewalk, and sidewalks that aren't being shoveled in accordance with our code. That being said, I, it's a double-edged sword. First off, we've got to be concerned about safety, and much of this village does not have sidewalks, so it's a double standard. But in reading the code, it says, "The owners or occupants tentatively cease undeterrent receiver or assigners of premises abutting any street where a sidewalk has been laid shall make a reasonable effort to clear snow from the sidewalk on such premises, but the sidewalk is in a passable condition and clear from all, from snow at all times. If the owner or occupant above mentioned shall fail to remove snow within 40 hours after it has fallen on a sidewalk, after it has been notified of the condition and being requested by the village to clear the sidewalk with snow, the village may provide for the removal thereof at the expense of the owner of such premises, and such charge shall become a lien upon premises benefited thereby and shall be collected by the village treasurer provided by the law." In reading this, I would say that it doesn't say anything about, Paul, a certified letter, that, and I can tell you through experience, back when my snow blowers broke down, Mark Table came to my house, and my remark to Mark was, there's about 30 of us right now that are in violation, and I was getting my snow blower fixed as it happened, and the person had complained. And so what I'm saying is, it's all or none, but it says nothing about a certified letter. And I think we've got to become more diligent in doing this, or this law is very ineffective. And the violations and enforcement of this law are very extreme. The fine can be up to $250 and/or imprisonment, not to exceed 15 days. So, I mean, the law has teeth, but it's not being, I guess, we've either got to enforce it or... And sunset time, since I talked to you, Paul, I've had a few, without mentioning main names, because they didn't want to bring their names up, concerned about sidewalk just not being cleared. So that's why I asked Mayor for it to be on the agenda. Thank you.
Well, usually, Dan, we get a complaint, we send them out a letter, but we have to have a complaint. The only ones that usually give us much complaints usually are the mail carriers.
But here's the thing, it doesn't say a letter. And what does a letter do when snow is a pain storm? We send the letter out, and in four days, we've had four days where they haven't done anything, and they got to sign for the letter, if you're going to send it certified.
So what do you, what do you say, is we need to hire somebody to go around after every snowstorm and check every sidewalk in this village?
I'm not saying that we need to do that, but what I'm saying is, I've read the law, and if we're not going to enforce the law, let's take it off the books.
How can we legally enforce it if we don't send them a letter? We charge it to their taxes, they come back and say, what's this for?
All I can tell you is, Mark Table came into my house that day.
And I have stopped at people's houses.
Okay, fair enough, Paul. So my remark to that is, you've done your job. Now they've got to clean it out immediately, and we hit them on their taxes. Or we sound of a bill, hit them on their taxes.
Legally, they can fight us on it.
Sure they can. So is that an excuse for enforcing the law?
No, but I think that's, and it was set up before I was here, but I think that's the reason it was set up, to send them a certified letter, so we had...
So we can bill, right? Prove that we've notified them.
The law doesn't say certified letter, though, so let's, if that's what you want, let's add that, but that, to me, makes no sense. But I've said my piece on it, and that's all I'm going to say.
Well, we can research other laws and other municipalities, and maybe come up with a better solution.
That's an idea, Tim, but I will say this, we have a law on the books, okay? Our attorney isn't here. Let's say some kid gets hit because a sidewalk isn't cleared, and now where are we? Because they're coming after their deepest pockets.
Well, that's what we need to do, I guess, look into something.
It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that 90% of the people in this village work diligently. John Urena, he's out shoveling the snow diligently as it's falling from the sky, and he's a one in a million. And, but there's people out there that don't have anything to do with it, take care of their sidewalks, and they don't, and they're not being fair to their fellow residents. But that being said, that doesn't solve the issue that we have on the books. And that's what I'm saying. And as far as the DPW, I've had nothing but compliments on our DPW. They're outstanding, I've never, and I've been a village board member for 20 years, I've never had better compliments thrown at this way to me about our DPW. And that's a credit to Paul and his staff.
Yeah, we'll just have to take a look at other municipalities and see that we can come up with something different. I'm sure every municipality deals with the same stuff, you know, during the wintertime, we'll just have to...
Yeah, all the, but it's...
But as far as we being liable, that's more of a question for our attorney, I think, than anything, whether we could be held liable with the law we have right now.
If we could, if they can prove that we didn't notify them, or I would say, we got problems, Tim. I think anybody reasonably would say that.
Yeah, I'd be right. I believe that's why certified letters are sent.
Well, and then again, if you have 50 today at three bucks a pop, that's 150 bucks, and what I discussed the other day, Paul, was, okay, so this is this snowstorm, it clears up, and now we have another one, are we going to send a certified letter again to each one of those? I mean, that's just, that's just insane.
More than $3, isn't it, for a certified letter?
Yeah, I'm probably, I'd be low, Tim. But then the question becomes, okay, if we have 10 snowstorms in the winter, are we sending out 10 certified letters to that household or households? At that point in time, we might better hire and staff and clean all the sidewalks, we'd probably be further ahead. And then we'd be taking jobs away from private contractors that are doing that for income. And maybe that's what we do.
Along with adding DPW staff, because I don't have enough people right now.
I don't, I get it, I do get it. I've got nothing but accolades for what our DPW does. I'm not saying, Dan, this isn't that big a problem, because it is, but it's almost like the law won't think, are these the same people all the time that are...
No, they're just, I mean, I get people's benefit about, and most of the time, I'll go up to a door, knock on it, and say, let them know what the law is and that they have 48 hours, you know, and then I, obviously, I can't get around every sidewalk, every snowstorm, but, you know, some stick in my mind, which there's a couple that right now are...
Here, Paul, here's a thought that I had that I mentioned to Pam, or I think I mentioned to you also. In June, when we send out our taxes, we send out a letter for the upcoming season saying, this is your notice that with each snowstorm, you've got to, whatever the law says, to take care of it. And if they don't, and we take care of it, we're going to bill them. And that way, we've notified everybody in the village. And for most people, that's not going to mean a thing, because they're good at it, but it's going to take care of the ones that aren't. And it's the landlord, so the landlord gets the tax bill, so it's up to him to enforce it.
If you think about how we can send out a reminder to the media tomorrow. I'm also wondering, I mean, I'm not trying to put anything on Paul, you said you knocked on the door, but is personal service considered notification, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I know in the college world, you would personally serve a stop work order. It is notification. It is considered notification, but you have to, you have to be able to validate it, you have to be able to prove that you did it. So no offense to Paul, but his words no doubt.
It depends on how you go about it. If you would have ordered or...
I can walk up to his door and say, I knocked on his door to know that he needed to clean his sidewalk, but if he denies it, what proof do I have that I did?
So my idea of putting in a tax bill, or putting in a tax bill each year, is a warrant, and maybe that's what we do.
Tax bills aren't sent out by our office.
Well, we can provide the letter for them to do it.
There you go.
Well, then maybe once a year, we're going to have to send a letter out to everybody. We can get the labels from a tax and do it. It's going to, it will take some time, but I think that's still going to be your best route, rather than try to pick out people each time with a certified letter. I don't know if anybody else has received complaints on this, but I have.
Moving on, and correspondence. Lewis County Office of Buildings and Fire Codes, basically, I'll probably get a copy of that, given the... Given Empire Deep Chrysler, go ahead to reuse the Farmer and Arts and Brooklyn Building for their dealership. Anybody got any questions on that? Rico, update, January twenty twenty-four, anybody got any questions on that? And we've got the Rico River Area Economic Visioning Summit agenda. Mickey, is anything you want to say about any of this?
I'll just mention that our next RACOC board meeting is on the next Wednesday at six o'clock at the Village of Copenhagen. The town of the commissions and local government conference is made first through the second. And I think some flyers and stuff have been sent out to different municipalities on that for registration. Taking on visioning, son of planning, we will be discussing that at the RACOC board meeting about what we're going to hand that, and we've also put a request out presenting. We continue to work with BOSI's on the water wastewater operator licensing for their students coming through. It sounds like the heavy equipment classes will be the ones that they'll try to run through. So we're just waiting for a draft on what that program will look like, given what we meet again. Talking with D O S about a student activity that they would sponsor that gets involved with local government and, you know, and how local government's run and that type of thing. So, we're working on that right now also. Fort Drum interns, we currently don't have any, but we're headed, I think, next Wednesday, too. During the day, I'm headed with Chris Barbosa in our office to Fort Drum to see about if we can find any potential interns from Fort Drum moving forward for the commission of the AICOC. Associate Cirker Rider, we do have an associate Cirker Rider now, her name's Amber Swan. She actually started last night in Copenhagen, so is that where, time I can make a meeting, she might be here. Antonia Watson has asked to join RACOC, so that'll be brought up at the RACOC board meeting also. And then we have several comprehensive plans going on right now, but, other than that, that's what I've got, unless you have other questions.
The village attorney's not here. Nothing, but treasures, you have anything other than your monthly report?
No, that was just the report.
Anybody have any questions on that? Chief of Police?
I don't have much. I gave everybody their yearly report. It's, it's up from the past couple of years to the total number of complaints, just slightly. On the twenty-fourth next week, we have several new candidates taking the agility test, so hopefully we're one step closer to getting a couple hired, so shouldn't be long.
Superintendent, anything?
I'm just going to mention again, after a snowstorm, you have forty-eight hours to clear your sidewalk. Remember, it's illegal to blow snow into the road, and there is no overnight parking on any village streets.
Personnel, hey? I'd like a real short executive session to discuss a personnel issue at the end of the meeting.
What's that in regards to Joe?
Possible resignation and reappointment. Finance? Ladies and fire department.
Yeah, the new fire truck is here, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Joe, and he couldn't be here tonight, but it looks to me like they've already decommissioned and sent out of town the other fire truck, so...
It was on the trailer the other day.
That's, that's what I saw, and I'm guessing, Tim, that's what it is. So, they had, they had spaghetti supper a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, it was very well attended, but apparently not well enough, so that they're going to have another one, because they had leftovers, and they were, once I missed, I missed Falcon, they'll be starting their chicken barbecues again, so fire department's doing quite well. I guess, unbeknownst to me, Joe, you brought up that we've got some issues with the roof that you've been discussing.
I was going to bring that up.
Okay, good. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, the only thing there, and we had that last big rainstorm, they had a pretty good leak, I guess, up there at the fire department. And we sent our guys up, and final, DPW checked it out, they were up there, the fire department was up there, too, they had shoveled roof, I believe. They did find a hole in the, in the roof, and they also found a section that's a little spongy. So our guys did...
Patched a hole, right?
No, we, we put some caulk in it. The company that actually put the roof in, they were going to do it on Monday, but with the weather, they couldn't. So Ryan is, at some point here in the next few days, is going to come up and actually put the patch on.
And they're also going to look at the soft section and give us an estimate on what it's going to cost, so we may have to repair a section of that roof in the summer.
That conducive to the earth connection?
Along that line, Joe brought it to my attention, there's actually a grant out there for fire departments. Over the last five, six years, their entranceway into the bays has been deteriorating bad, and that's due to drainage and other issues. So, I've been in contact with Joe Austin, sent him the copy of the grant, and it's, I think it's something that they should look into, because I believe it was a hundred percent grant.
Yeah, I guess. They got up to a million dollars for fire departments.
Yes, so maybe, maybe rehab on the roof included for that.
A million dollars for each fire department, or conjuctively?
They got to hand out.
Okay.
I mean, there's, it's, there's different categories.
Right.
There's, there's up to another, like, and Joe may see it, like, the trucker just up, up to five hundred thousand towards the trucker. It's a federal grant. I said to Paul, I said, we, no, we got to fix the park or not, now we got to do the roof, so why not try and work with the fire department and put in three grand?
I'm very impressed with our fire department, I have fun attending their meetings, executive meetings, and they work very, very hard for this community.
Planning boards, zoning boards, any?
Nope, nothing.
Anything from municipal board?
Nothing.
Towns law? County, anything?
Nope, they were here.
Nothing from recreation, only I see they got the skating open back up today, they left quite out with the rink this year because of the warm weather, but now we're going into cold weather, I think we'll be operational pretty good.
Well, a lot of that has to do with their chiller, their chiller's not running the way it should, it's, it's pretty outdated. I think if they can get a new chiller up there, even with these warm slots that we've had, that they'll be able to keep ice, but I think they're, Joe's working on that.
Rico, we've already gone over that. So bring us down the public comment.
And now you make the air, keep on hearing about the, the snow, the sidewalks and everything else. My main concern also is one thing, at the corner of Cascade and Stoke Street, the old landowner who's got those hedges, they're way overgrown. And according to the law, got in touch with codes, if you've got any hedges, they're supposed to be twenty-four inches away from the sidewalk, and they are overgrown. Now, the thing is, I walk to my mother's dog every day, and with the weather and everybody else, you won't believe how much people, they cannot see you when they're coming around that corner. And also, since I cannot walk on that sidewalk, I almost got hit. And I'm going to tell you something, if I get hit, I'll have to sue the landowner, and then I'll have to approach the village. We are always thinking about safety, and that is the worst. And I got in touch with codes, and I told them about that, and they said that the village is going to have to talk to that landowner, and it'll probably have to take them to court, because they even said, codes said, that is a safety issue there. And I got another. The thing is, is that my neighbor next door to me, she's, I don't have no problems about her fence, except for one issue. Her fence towards, I had to have code, called codes, and tell them when she was putting up the fence, she didn't look into things, we're all supposed to look into things. She was going to have her fence all the way to the, to the sidewalk, and it says in the, in the, for the codes, it has to be twenty-four inches away. So there's no problem there. But I had codes come back down, because of the way her fence is, when I come down, I'll come out of my lower driveway, I cannot see if someone's coming on the sidewalk, or if there's a car coming down. And what's going to happen is, I, I'm either, heaven forbid, even I have company that comes and uses my driveway to get to park and stuff. Heaven forbid, someone doesn't get hit, I will be liable, the person who I hit, or whatever, or car, I will be liable, I will get probably sued, then I'll have to sue the landowner because of the obstruction that that person has caused. Then I, the village doesn't want to do anything for safety, then I'll have to go and probably sue the village. If you go down where I live, take a look at that, you are all welcome to go down, down the lower driveway and come up it, and you'll see that there was never an obstruction, and that neighbor of mine has caused an obstruction. Even codes said that is a safety issue. And that I have to come to the, to the village board on, on that matter. Plus, I've got another thing. She has put posted signs, they can't do nothing about it, posted signs on every single panel, and it's facing my, my mother's property. My mother feels offended. She said she doesn't mind it if she had one at the end, in the middle, and on, on the other side. And also, you're all welcome to come down and take a look at that, because on the other side, they're all posted signs, and it looks terrible. She's got one on every single panel. But if you come down, if she would just take down that one panel at the end of the driveway, then we'd be able to, there would be no obstruction. There was never no obstruction, but there is a big obstruction now. And I already took a look at another place on East State Street that's got a, a, a fence, and their fence is, it's got a fence, and it slanted, but, which is very nice of them, they pulled it back further so that a person that's coming out of the driveway, there's no obstruction. If you're thinking safety, well, there's a big safety right down there. And in all the years that I've lived down there, there was never no problem, but even code said, there is a safety issue right there. But I want hope that all of you, don't say, I would like all of you to come down there, go down that driveway, come up it, so you have a better understanding, because a lot of times when you, we say anything to you, oh, yeah, yeah. No, best, you all live in the village, doesn't take that long. Plus, I got another issue. On Jefferson Street, when they were putting new poles up a long time ago, you've got NIMO, well, they had put their new post. The thing is, is that the other two utilities put on to a cut post, onto that utility post of NIMO, well, National Grid. You know what's holding that? Big section of post added on to that? Straps. And they're getting worn out. And the thing is, is that anything break, those straps break, someone's going to get killed. So the thing is, those other two utilities, I'm pretty sure it's Time Warner and the telephone company, need to put that, the rest of that, on to there and take that one post off. It's a safety issue. And I don't know if any of you kind of look around here, and I know you've got to have people bring it up, but I thought that maybe, since, oh, you live in the village, I thought that maybe you'd be taking a gander, looking and stuff. That's a safety issue, that's been there for a long time.
Then when you're talking about, there's been numerous emails sent to National Grid to get something done about it.
But it's that they're going to, they're going to tell you one thing, Mr. Mayor, is those other two utility, utility people, they need to contact them so they can correspond and put that on there. And then, we got another thing. Right across from Stewart's, where Western Auto, whatever, was there, their sidewalk never plowed. Plus, I got in touch with codes quite a few months ago, there is obstruction. You've got a piece, it's an old dehumidifier that's been there for months and months and months, and nobody's taken it out of there. So if the village comes around and hits it, and someone's coming down, that plows out like that, someone's going to get killed. And people, I tell you, things like that, we've had furniture put on the curbs and everything else, that looks terrible. And the thing is, that's got to stop. But this issue right down there, right, right across from Stewart's, go right down there, you'll see it sticking out of the, out of the, out of the snowbank. It's been there for months, sir, all of you. Go down there and take a look. And also, don't put your head in the sand either. You need to take a look at your village. If you want safety, look at it. You all are elected officials. We put our faith into all of you. And it's pretty sad that some of us, when we've approached you or called you, and we don't get called back, that makes us very upset. And I've had messages before, and I never got called back.
Anybody else? Public comment, Jeff Turner?
I may have missed it, at the beginning of the meeting, did you introduce the new prospective, or she, the new village clerk? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear you say it, you brought her name up.
Brittany, the net up.
Okay.
Actually, we'll be taking Pam's place.
So did you bring up, and I might have been answering, I might have been answering phone calls.
No, I thought Pam introduced her, I wasn't sure. When I came in, I thought she'd already been introduced.
Welcome, Brittany.
Henry, bring his taxes into your pennies.
No, I can't. I pay online now. I pay online.
No, you don't, do you? Us? You're paying that extra fee?
It's nothing. The taxes for villagers and law will be nothing compared to my taxes for...
No, but you've got to pay so much to use the, the online fee correctly.
It's nothing. It's only mine.
I can't believe you do that.
It's only mine. I do.
You're in here every day.
No.
Is that it, Henry?
We were talking about sidewalks, and I second the fact that John Urina is out there, summer, winter, mowing people's lawns, shovel people's walks, taking the fire hydrant on East State Street. There's a, there's a law on the books about fire hydrants, and the landowner, I said, I don't have a fire hydrant on my property, but it's right next to my property, if you go by, it's about eight feet from the fire hydrant that I did for years, keeping it clean. The new owner that bought, bought Jeff Ellinger's house, approached me and said, if it's my fire hydrant, I'll clean it out. So I said, okay, no problem, I'm seventy-three, he's fifty-something, he can do it. But there's a lot of fire hydrants in this village, they're covered with snow. I saw the, the little front loaded little Bobcat was out there doing some snow work. But my concern is, there's a fire department in your part of the fire department, right, Paul?
It's not now, but...
Okay, but wouldn't you like a bigger space where you can bring your big hoses and put them on there? I mean, it's not a garden hose, but a big three or four inch hose. They don't bend.
I do as much as I can with the people I have.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying DPW should do it, I'm saying...
Every time the plows go out, we've got to do sidewalks, we've got to do fire hydrants, and...
But I'm not, I'm not putting an onus on DPW, I'm putting the onus on the landowner that has a fire hydrant on their property.
Yeah, I can't mind...
They should, they should be cognizant and at least shovel it out. And cartridges could put in these barrels over the, fifty-five gallon barrels over there, that gets frozen to ground, the fire department's going to have to take a big hammer to get it off the ground.
Plus, it keeps moisture in there, and...
Yeah, it's going to destroy it, but the people, and you say, you get a letter for your taxes, that you're supposed to take care of mowing the lawn, or your fire, your sidewalks.
You could include that, that's a good idea, too, of the law.
It's a safety, that's a safety issue. Every minute, the house burns, you can't get the fire hydrant open and put water on it, like on Winslow Street in Watertown, you know, the fire hydrant was no pressure. We have pressure now because they did a, the big street project, you know, we got good pressure. But I've always kept my fire hydrant cleaned out, and now I've been told not to keep his fire hydrant cleaned out, so... You can come and do mine. You want to do, do mine.
You're retired, too.
That's the only thing I wanted to bring up, because you were talking about sidewalks, I just said, it's the landowner's responsibility according to the law and the books. and I just said, it's the landowner's responsibility, according to the law and the books, you know? Henry?
I was in the fire department, too, and the big thing is to wrap the hose around it, so it's got to be clean all the way around it, not just in front of it, not where the water comes out, because they actually wrap the hose around it as they're laying it out, so, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Our Navy, so we get, you know, with the big hose, you can't just bend them like a garden hose.
Right, right.
With the water, with the big hoses, you can't bend them.
No, you charge your, your heavy, yeah.
I'm just looking at from a safety issue.
Yeah.
I don't want anybody's house to burn on Park Ave.
Right, it should be the same thing as smoke detectors, you know, to me, it's the same thing, check your smoke detector, check your hydrants, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else, any public comment? The motion to go in the executive session for, for snow. Second, Stephen, in favor?